So the idea is that we weren't going to have this big snack.
Got it.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the school committee business meeting to order for October 17th. It is 6:30. Mrs. Kennedy, whenever you're ready. Call attendance.
I understand they are written. We wait, Ms. Hall?
Present.
Mr. Callahan?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
Mr. Menon?
Here.
Mr. Cole?
Here.
Okay, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any public comment this evening? Okay, you can actually have a seat. I need to read a statement and then I'll call you up. I just wanted to see, do we have two, just two hands for public comment? Excellent, thank you. The school committee invites members of the public to offer public comment, a welcome and important part of our work. Speakers are allowed up to two minutes for comments. Comments longer than two minutes may be submitted to the district office in writing for inclusion into the minutes of the meeting. We expect and encourage civility. Any marks that are defamatory or abusive are always considered out of order and the chairperson may terminate an individual's privilege of address on that basis. We ask all speakers to respect the following guidelines. Speakers may offer objective criticism of and/or ideas for school operations and programs on the agenda. Please refrain from complaints about specific school personnel or members of the school community. Finally, we request that no student names or any identifying information be offered as that would violate the student's right to privacy. Thank you. Okay, so whoever wants to go first, you can come on up. I'm just going to ask that you state your name and address for our minutes and then you'll have your two minutes.
Hey, my name is Annie Moore and I live at 17 Otis Place, Unit 4. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I know most of you are familiar with the Fair Share Amendment, which would allow a 4% state tax increase on personal income over $1 million. Fewer than seven out of 1,000 Massachusetts earners would be affected by this tax. These funds will go to improving public education and transportation. I know that there's been some increased funding for the state, for example, the ESER funds, since COVID, but the money from the Fair Share is a sustainable revenue stream that will continue after all that money is gone. It is estimated it could bring in up to $2 million a year, I'm sorry, $2 billion. There's been a lot of misinformation in the media lately about the fair share of what it is and what it isn't. Some people have suggested that the funding can be diverted by the legislature into things other than education and transportation. It can't because this is a constitutional amendment and legally binding on the legislature. This is not a tax on small businesses, it is a tax on personal income. Some are worried about the sale of their houses and how it would affect them. It is estimated that a mere 2% of home sales could be affected by this tax. Remember, there's a $500,000 deductible on house sales. This is not a tax on inheritances. Inheritances are not considered income. Finally, the income level where the Fair Share tax kicks in will be adjusted for inflation. Massachusetts has incredible wealth, but it also has the highest level of income inequality in the country. We need money for educational infrastructure, special education, vocational training, support for public colleges to bring their costs down, expanded after-school program, and many other things to make Massachusetts public schools reflect the great resources we have in the state. Fair Share can help make that happen and I hope you will support the resolution. Thank you.
Wow, you had one second left. Nicely done. Nicely done.
That's a role model.
Good evening. My name is Deirdre Benzina and I live at 11 Cushing Avenue. I am here to speak in favor of the Fair Share Amendment. Question one would create a 4% tax on the portion of a person's annual income above $1 million. These funds would be dedicated to transportation and education. If you don't make more than $1 million a year, you will not be taxed. Why am I in favor of this amendment? As a community college professor and an employee of the Massachusetts Public School System for over 30 years, I see the incredible need to improve our public schools and how funding is a continual struggle. This is especially true in underserved communities which have been systematically underfunded for decades. The Student Opportunity Act designed to repair that underfunding needs new revenue to be fully implemented. We also need high-quality public higher education that doesn't bury students in debt. It should not be cost prohibitive for students to attend college, yet many students are graduating with crushing debt. With the Fair Share Amendment, we will have an additional $2 billion a year to give students the resources they need. Across Massachusetts, our schools are facing shortages in educators and school counselors. Teachers are being expected to do more with less. We need to fill those gaps and the Fair Share Amendment is an equitable way to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we have any additional public comment this evening? Okay, moving on to student recognition.
All right. I think my group's out in the, uh... My student's out there, yes. Might be taking a nap. So are we. All right. Waiting for the Quimby family to come on in.
Maybe they could just sit right here.
Sure, if he's a little nervous, we can... How about that? How about I... I'll start.
Why don't you just give it to him out in the hallway and we'll follow you out there.
All right. All right. Principal Sokolowski, we ready? All right, the big moment. All right, well, first of all, once you, yeah, okay. Yeah. Awesome, thank you very much. We have a very special guest that we're going to be recognizing tonight. As part of our school committee meetings, in the beginning, we like to recognize student achievement and also staff achievement. So for tonight, we're very fortunate to recognize Declan Quimby. Declan's helping hand with Ms. Rachel Brown. He gave out stamps at the end of the day to help students who are displaying expected behaviors in the hallway, for displaying the Clipper values, which is kindness, respect, responsibility. And I think many of the adults in our community could learn from Mr. Declan Quimby. He's been a huge help to the Bresnahan School. He's also been a huge help for the PBIS initiatives and we are so fortunate to recognize this young man who's in first grade and we expect tremendous leadership from him for the rest of his career in Newburyport. So, it is with great pleasure that I get to recognize as superintendent of schools, Declan Quimby. You might think of, yes, I'm sure he'd be very proud. If you all want to come up for a family photo, that would be awesome. Ms. Hall, you want to, Vice Chair of the School Committee? All right. Now, I heard if this award, you get an ice cream. All right, Maggie, one too. Everybody, you guys have a wonderful night. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Remember those days.
Always the best part of the night.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Callahan, do we have warrants this evening?
I do have warrants. I moved up the following named bills in Newburyport Public Schools, amounted in the aggregate $531,850.40. Be approved and forwarded to the City Auditorium for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have one set of minutes from October 3rd. That was the evening with the safety forum, which is referenced at the beginning. Any corrections to those minutes? Ms. Walker?
Yeah, on page four, under the proposed EF Cuba trip, 2024, the comment that is listed for me says, Juliette Walker, explain the transportation policy. I think it's just, I asked about transportation. I don't think there was any question about policy. So, yeah, just simplify that. Thank you.
So just strike that?
Yeah, she got it.
Okay.
Who will accept the minutes as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Abstain?
You weren't at that meeting. Great, okay. Time for our student representative report.
All right, so to start off with the high school update. Last Wednesday, the 10th and 11th graders displayed hard work and perseverance while taking the PSAT exam. The seniors were able to schedule college visits, do job shadowing, or work with senior English teachers on their college application essays. And the freshmen came in that day and were involved in team-building activities, along with several other activities planned by the guidance department. And on last Friday, the National Honor Society students organized a blood drive with the Red Cross. They managed the entire event with support from their advisor, Ken Cole. They coordinated with the Red Cross, helped with the setup, managed signups, and provided moral support for all of the donors. And due to their work, 42 people can benefit from the units of blood collected from the drive. And then this coming Friday is the homecoming dance being held at the high school. And then a few student recognitions. Congratulations to Caroline Metzendorf, who has earned a national recognition honor based on performance on college board assessments of the PSAT and AP exams. And then senior Tula Sullivan, recent grad Charlie Grossman, and 2019 grad Lynn Amandy wowed an audience with their original poetry at Whitman on Walls, a project that engages 60 performers from around the globe, produced by Campagna dei Colombari. And they were three of nine local poets who responded to Whitman's words with their own. And a book has been printed and a video will follow. And then for the sports updates, boys soccer is 14-0, girls soccer is 13-1 and both defeated Penn Tucket 3-0 and won the ALS Cup. Volleyball is 13-2, field hockey is 9-2-2, girls cross-country is 4-0, as well as boys cross-country. Football is 4-2 and golf is 13-4. And now for NOC updates. On Friday, the NOC Middle School will welcome Allison Crowther for an all-school assembly. Ms. Crowther is the mother of Wells Remy Crowther. Wells is remembered by his selfless acts of heroism on 9/11. Boston College honors Wells yearly with the Man in the Red Bandana football game and the Man in the Red Bandana 5K. And the NOC students are working with their advisors on their student-led conversations. These student-led conversations are creating a forum for students to take ownership of their success and continue to build strong partnerships between the school, parents, and students.
So from the middle school and 4th grade, our 4th graders visited Spencer Pierce Little Farm and participated in dirt detectives, archaeology at the farm. They rotated through the stations listed below. Archaeology evacuation pit, exploration of archaeological dig, use tools of the trade and recover artifacts. Field processing, sorting, crossmending, and surface analysis of shards. Artifact analysis, illustration of an artifact recovery, artifact analysis game, museum house, exploration of the museum spaces and museum artifacts. And then 5th grade, our 5th graders visited the Franklin Park Zoo. The trip ties to the 5th grade writing curriculum. Students have read about how and why zoos may be good or bad. Their accumulating writing project is to argue if zoos are good or bad. They will be tasked with supporting their opinion with text evidence and elaborating based on their experience. And then from the Bresnahan, last week, the 2nd grade went to the Ipswich River Wildlife Sanctuary. They learned about the local wildlife and comparing ecosystems consistent with our 2nd grade curriculum. They also saw Bruce Menon, who led them on a tour. We have an exciting new program that started today called Clipper Courses. Our teachers are hosting free one-hour after-schools using their contractual student contract hour to lead enrichment programs open to all students K through 3. Their courses offer a variety of activities such as Spanish, STEM math games, theater, typing, and composing. We are also hosting a targeted academic intervention groups as part of this program. Salter Transportation is providing a late bus. We are having fun with Blue Blocks during the month of October generously donated to us by Newburyport Youth Services. The Blue Blocks inspire students to create their own inventions, environments, and activities. It is child-directed and open-ended. It encourages self-expression through deep joyful play. The Blue Block set contains a variety of loose parts including cubes, bricks, cogs, curves, and cylinders. They fit together in ways that allow for building, stacking, channeling, and connecting. It is fun to watch students have the opportunity to engage with one another, think creatively, and problem solve together.
I would just add that the 2nd graders at Bresnahan did the community proud. They were really collaborative. They were very kind, very well behaved, and asked really terrific questions and were locked in for two straight hours just catching grasshoppers and stuff like that. It was great. It was really great. I was very proud of them.
Awesome.
Okay, next up, we're going to be hearing about a proposed middle school overnight field trip?
Yes. Yes, we have Mr. Makos, Ms. Grosskin will also be here. I just want to be, before we get started, I wanted, oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to, for the school committee, just to touch base regarding the process. You know, we haven't, you know, as central office, I haven't had time to really work with the principals on the overnight field trips. It's been so long since we've really had an overnight field trip. And I want to credit our teachers and the administration for working with parents to really, beginning in the school year in September and October, of kind of putting this together. So I think through the enthusiasm, we did have a misstep with the policy and procedures and tomorrow's principal's meeting will work with our administration to make sure they fully understand. As we move forward, we're going to have the proposal first in front of school committee and then we can go back and work out, you know, all of the details. So, thank you very much and, Mr. Makos, there you go.
Awesome, so I want to extend an invitation and obviously tell the school committee members for Friday at 12:30 as well. Feel free to come to our all-school assembly. I think it's going to be quite an event. We're very pleased to have Allison Crowther come, so if you guys are around, please come. So, this conversation started a little bit last, you know, last, the beginning of last year of when we were bringing the overnight trips. Obviously, last year with the state of where we were through the pandemic, we obviously tabled it. And, you know, throughout the rest of the, you know, spring and into the summer, you know, array of parents. And our staff members also just saying, can we start to look into looking at a trip again? And again, with the unknown of where the, kind of, where COVID was landing at the beginning of this year or through the summer months, we started to feel a bit more confident on where we were going to land. So we started to, you know, reach out a little bit to some area tour guides and some companies. So in partnership with a, some local people that obviously have organized a Costa Rica trip with some middle school and high school-aged children this past summer. We started to go down, you know, do we go back to DC? Do we look at other places like Philadelphia? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that cue. Am I better? Okay, is this better? Okay, this is my first time up here, so, thank you very much. So we put those in the bloopers.
It woke up all the students that were in bed.
No, they're working on their assignments right now, Mr. Gallagher. So just looking at some areas, you know, we did look down, you know, the idea of going back down to DC. But we were really looking at, let's get back, kind of get our feet wet again, looking at a shorter trip. Also looking at some areas that truly align with our curriculum. And I think what you'll see, and I have my experts back here around the curriculum as far as, you'll see our itinerary right now, our planned itinerary, which is tentative. It really aligns with what the students are studying through their 8th grade civics classes. Obviously with the connection of the history of Philadelphia. It's a shorter trip. It's a three-day, two-night trip. We're not going to be able to do DC in three days and two nights just with the length of the trip, the added hours on a bus, and then just, you know, as much you can see in DC. Even doing it in five days is often challenging. So, we figured we'd start with Philadelphia this year and then, you know, on the way back, come back to Liberty Island and give, you know, the students another great opportunity, you know, to see, you know, historical monument and enjoy kind of the last kind of push until they get back home. So our tentative dates are May 23rd to May 26th. The overall cost of the trip right now is $1,000, so it is pricey. Working with and talking to some area North Shore principals, principals at Penn Tucket and Triton, Swamp, Scott Marblehead. We have a group of North Shore principals that exhaust these ideas and we throw these ideas back and forth to each other. A DC trip right now, now mind you, DC museums are free. Obviously, there's a cost to Philadelphia, you know, monuments and museums to go to. A DC trip would cost our students over $1,700 right now. So obviously with the expensive gas and hotel and transportation, obviously with the rates of inflation as we all know. So the DC trip would be even more expensive. But again, I think going back and talking with my team of teachers and just talking to parents, just getting a short trip here, getting back to normal, giving our kids an experience, you know, kind of the rite of passage as 8th grade, which is something that we heard loud and clear from our community members and families. So hopefully this will be a start and we can obviously look at other avenues if this goes well, maybe going back to Philadelphia or extending a trip elsewhere. And if you guys want to add anything or if you guys have any questions?
I just want to, I forgot about Ms. Mary Kate Allen, science teacher extraordinaire.
You're very welcome. Madam Chair, can I go? So thanks so much for clarifying. The cost was one of my questions. I think it's great you guys are planning overnight trips. I think that's awesome. I'm sure people are excited to get back to traveling. You guys are amazing that you go with those kids and spend all that time. But I'm sure you have a blast. But I guess one question I had, just on clarifying about the fundraising. What is your fundraising plan? Do you have some activities? I know you have some, you probably have some already in the works and what's your overall plan?
We did start fundraising like the moment that we thought we might be able to do this. So currently, we are working on a fundraiser where students are selling cookies and cake rolls. We've been doing that since, for about a week and a half. We've already raised with that as a whole group, $3,152. It goes until this Friday. We did a 50-50 raffle this weekend at Oktoberfest. We raised $1,145, which was really nice. We obviously want to provide as many opportunities of fundraising for individuals to raise money, but also for the families that have already indicated that they need some financial support. Should I talk about that? So, we sent out a little survey just to see are parents interested, are families interested? Do they want to get back on this trip? And if so, knowing that the trip was going to be around $1,000, what kind of financial support need was out there? And from that, 168 families received this survey. About 140 responses came back, so there's still 28 families I haven't heard from. Of those 140 responses, from there, 39 families indicated that they would need some sort of financial support. I offered options like would you need up to 200, 500, 700, or the full thousand? And based on those options, the responses coming back to me added up to $17,900 in need. And again, that's not including the 28 families that haven't asked. Last time we went on a trip, or last time we canceled a trip? I don't remember out there. Last time we had to cancel the trip, we had 25 families in need and that totaled $11,615, so clearly there's a greater need. So we plan to do as many fundraisers as we possibly can. Obviously, I'll be filling out grant applications for a few of the local banks. The PTO will be offering a donation as well. I know that I've already reached out to NEF to talk about some ideas that they may have for us to help fundraise, but that's kind of where we're at right now, Juliette.
Awesome, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Callahan?
Speaking of the NEF, the auction's coming up. Is there a class gift basket that would go towards anything?
I think they normally have a class gift basket, but I don't think we have anything at this point towards the trip, but that's a great idea.
We have a meeting on Wednesday.
Wednesday? Okay.
At the high school at 7:00.
Okay.
If you want to come by.
All right, thank you.
And then my other question, there was some sort of a fund for people who wanted to donate to other families? Is that still intact from the canceled DC trip?
So we do have a fund. We already have a fund from our trip and I have had a lot of people that have said, hey, we'd love to offer support for other families in need. So I know I've responded to a few saying you could send in a check made out to the NOC Middle School with the memo saying scholarship fund for 8th grade. And that would go into, we have a trip fund that that's all of the money and that will go towards scholarship.
Do you happen to know how much is in that right now?
I think you said about $4,500, but I just deposited $1,145 today from this weekend.
And I do want to say I bought raffle tickets, but I lost. So there's nothing sketchy going.
The winner from Sunday was actually a fellow staff member, Nancy Cruiser, and she donated it all right back into the fund.
We picked the right ticket.
I got 10, still lost. That's okay. That's okay. Jim was a good, Jim was a good salesperson.
I have photos and documentation of the selection.
Mr. Callahan, you still have a winner in our book.
Do you have any other questions? It's safe to say that you will assure that every student can attend.
Absolutely.
Regardless of need, right?
Of course.
That's the bottom line, right?
100%.
With all these different fundraising possibilities and, excellent. Okay, so I think we're prepared to make a motion, Ms. Walker. I look to you because you're our policy expert. You probably have this one memorized by now.
Yeah, I think just, consistent with the policy, which is J.J.H. and the school committee policies. And I thank you for answering the questions we had about the fundraising. It's certainly an appropriate trip for this age group and thanks for clarifying why you're shortening it and going to a different venue, which I think all makes sense to me. There are options for additional financial assistance, which I think is great. Ms. Kennedy, you don't have to track all of that, I'm sorry. The point is, consistent with our policy, I would recommend that we vote in to approve this trip for May 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Vice Chair Hall, if I could just add, I think it's helpful that we're aware that there's a scholarship fund. So if anybody who's listening tonight is interested in donating, that they could send a check to the school, just indicating that it goes to the 8th grade scholarship trip fund. So, or 8th grade trip fund for helping kids go, so.
That's excellent. Maybe that's something we could put out there in a newsletter or an update.
Absolutely.
Let people know that that's a possibility. Great. Okay, so next up, we have a resolution in support of the Fair Share Amendment, which was in your packet. Hopefully, everyone got a chance to look that over. I will read it if anyone would like me to read it. Otherwise, I'm going to assume that you've read it. Good, okay. Well, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion in favor of the resolution in support of the Fair Share Amendment.
Second.
Discussion? Yes.
We've done this for a couple of other things. Where do these resolutions go?
Well, I was, yeah.
Like the gun safety thing we did, like it sits somewhere so that someone knows that as a group, we have made this.
Yeah, Ms. Walker and I were talking about that, that because this one is time-sensitive, I don't feel the need to put it on the website like we did with gun storage.
Once they're done, are they stored?
Right, well, it will be captured in our minutes.
Okay, so just in the standard record-keeping.
Yeah, I don't think anything's necessary beyond that, but I'm open to your thoughts.
Very often in the closing days of these referendum questions, somebody takes out a big ad somewhere and said the following groups are in support of this.
That's correct.
And if we're affirmative, we would be listed as one of those groups.
Along with, there's many other communities. Our own Newburyport City Council has already passed a resolution in favor and many other communities. All right. MASC resolutions. I do have an exciting announcement. We have a delegate. Ms. Walker has arranged her schedule so that she can attend, so we will be represented.
If there's any amendment changes?
Okay, so we have, I'll just pass this over to you. It's a packet where you could note any amendments. I don't know how detailed we want to get in our discussion. Mrs. Kennedy, as we're going through these six resolutions, I'd suggest that you don't feel the need to capture discussion, simply motions and votes. Otherwise, it's going to be, there may be a fair amount of back and forth. Okay, I have that, so.
Oh, you do have that?
Is this an extra?
Yes, this is just extra.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So Ms. Walker, I'm going to work with you on this since you'll be our representative there. What I'm going to suggest is that we just take them one through six, start with any questions, clarifications, and then if we're feeling comfortable, make a motion and go from there. Does that sound good? Sound reasonable? Okay. So Resolution One says regarding sanctuary laws for transgender students. I'm going to assume that people have read these, but let's start with any questions, thoughts? Mr. Menon?
Well, the third, whereas, sounds totally in alignment with the position of this district on kids being safe, so.
All children deserve a safe environment in which to grow up.
Yes, so.
I also found this to be consistent with our goals for mental health and wellness of all children. Anyone else have thoughts, questions? Okay, well, I'll make a motion to support Resolution One.
Seconded.
Discussion?
If I could just add, for those who are watching from home, that, and I think you already said this, Vice Chair Hall, this is Resolution One regarding sanctuary laws for transgender students, and the gist of the resolution is to support individuals and families, trans individuals and families. While it may feel like it's a little beyond a school committee's jurisdiction, I believe that in this day and age, it's really important for us to unite as elected officials and representatives of our community, to unite in support of all humans and their rights and their individual rights to be who they are. I'm a little, it's a little discouraging that we do have to take these steps, but it's also reaffirming that we live in a democracy that supports rights of all people, and I appreciate that this particular resolution references prior passage of the Act in 2011 of the Act Relative to Gender Identity, which was a commitment by Massachusetts to support civil rights for transgender residents. And I think more and more schools are finding that we need to speak up and speak out for our students who are trans and all LGBTQ plus individuals. So I fully support this resolution.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on to Resolution Two is to increase the maximum balance allowed by the Special Education Reserve Fund. Seems like kind of a no-brainer. It just reflects inflation. It's currently at 2% of the annual net school spending. This is our safety net should a student move into the community with significant costs associated with maybe an outside placement, the transportation could be, you know, well over $100,000, correct?
Correct.
So it would increase it from 2% of our annual spending to 5%. Doesn't mean we need to, but it gives us the option. So I don't see a downside. Any other questions, thoughts? Okay, I'll make a motion for us to approve Resolution Two.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I think as I read this resolution and as I sort of remember, and maybe Ms. Walker can help me with this, communities have the option to set up these funds. I don't believe that Newburyport has ever, I don't think we have that one. We've never set up this fund. It's sort of, you know, we've talked about it for years, that it would be really great to have that pool of money set aside for these kinds of things, but the city has not entertained seriously that.
We have other things that, like the school choice fund and...
Yeah, so, yeah, in some communities, it's a contingency fund through the city regarding special education. So if you do have a move-in or you do have a cost, the funding's there.
So this would be very specific to that?
Correct.
For instance, it wouldn't be the kind of thing we could have used when we had our newcomers and needed increased EL services, so it's very targeted.
So this would be for the, this would be for the communities, municipal communities that have established this type of fund where they can increase it, but I mean, I would be in support of that, as we all know with the cost of special education and transportation and a lot of these things. So I would be in favor of that.
So even though it doesn't apply to us now?
Specifically, it could down the line.
Down the line, yeah. I would hope it would apply to us down the line.
Okay, great. Yes, Ms. Walker?
So maybe, I don't know, Bruce or Steve, if you know any of the history of why the cap is in place?
I don't know the specific history. I'm not surprised it's a cap, and I'm not surprised that it's as low as it is, but my guess is that it's been that low for a long time. I can't say specifically it goes back to Ed reform in '93, but it's, you know, it's a cap that's been there, I think, a long time. So this recommended change, I think, is a positive step anyway.
Yeah, I would, I think a lot of it is also is related to the Mass Association of Approved Private Schools who set rates, you know, annually in terms of increase, and this is a way that, again, communities can prepare and have that contingency plan and hopefully provide, be able to provide better educational services for those students that need them. So I think all in all, the move to increase from two to five is a real positive move.
Great. Anyone else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Resolution Three is membership of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. Didn't really get a handle or have an opinion on this one, so appreciate it.
Yeah, sure. The, this is sort of like a board of DESI, and sitting school committee members and sitting educators are prohibited from sitting on that board, which is very unusual in the history of all these kinds of boards, you know. I mean, we're seeing corporations now having union members sitting on their boards, so this is kind of, I'm not really sure why they would want to stick with this. There's a lot of really good school committee members out there, a lot of really good educators, and it's an opportunity to get to the table. And goodness knows, they could use more voices at the table from people in the front line. So I would strongly support this myself.
Any other thoughts on this one? Mr. Callahan?
I definitely understand what Mr. Menon's saying. I just don't know if there's a conflict of interest. You're kind of the people making the rules and the people implementing the rules that were made, and I don't know what that Board seat would even mean, right? It's not very specific. They would be a voting board person or how that works. I mean, and I haven't even thought about it until this came out. When is the, when is the event?
The vote is November 2nd.
Are these all something that we have to do tonight? Because we got it on Thursday, and if I don't know enough about it, I don't necessarily want to vote on it. I'd like to be able to, specifically this one.
I think it's fine for us to do the same.
You know, I'm thinking like, we don't allow people who are on the school committee and left for less than a year to work for the city, right?
Right.
Or, I meant, for the district, rather. So I kind of see it in the same way. I'd like to look into this a little bit more, and there's probably, you know, nothing untoward, but I don't feel comfortable voting on it tonight if we don't have to, just because I don't know about it.
I think one of the, yeah, one of the issues is we don't have a, do we have a meeting before the next?
We do not.
So, I mean, I think we would, if there was a desire either individually not to vote on it, or if the board decides, if the committee decides, we'd rather table it or just not vote on it. We don't have to.
If the rest of you have opinions, like to vote on it, I'll just abstain. I don't have a problem doing that.
I think, Madam Vice Chair, I am sort of feeling the way Mr. Callahan is, I don't know enough about this. It seems like a good idea based on your explanation, but I don't know enough about the ramifications to really take a stand one way or the other personally.
I don't feel like we need to make a motion on this. Mr. Cole, do you want to weigh in? Past experience attending?
Yeah, I mean, the only, the only thing that I can say is that back when I first started on the committee, I actually met a colleague on the Brookline School Committee, and she had essentially been elevated to the Board of Education, not as a sitting member, but as a former member of the Brookline School Committee. So I think that this is just a natural step in the right direction to try to get, you know, I don't see, I guess I don't see where the conflict of interest, if, like in her case, one year she's serving on the Brookline School Committee, and then she's essentially elevated to the Board of Education. I think it's a natural step, and I think there'll be ways to allow that with fairness and an eye to prevent any conflict of interest happening. So, I mean, I'd support it on that regard.
Let me just ask one question then, if that's, if all sounds good.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is it, yeah, I'm just looking at this paragraph. So this is stating that if you are a current educator or school committee member, but I think, Steve, what you were just referencing was someone who once was a school committee member.
She was, she was actually, the year that I, the year I first met her, she was on the Brookline School Committee, then like the next year, she had elevated to...
But also remained on the school committee?
No.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think this is saying let you do both at the same time.
Right, and, but...
So it's making that change, that she wouldn't have had to resign from the school committee to join the board.
Yeah, so I mean, I think it's just a natural progression, and it allows, I guess, for more engagement and communities to be able to see that some of the membership on this board are actively involved with the schools as either school committee members or as educators. So I think that's a good thing for people to see.
Okay. I mean, everyone would still need to be vetted and follow conflict of interest laws.
Right, right. I would let the lawyers handle the conflict of interest. I don't see any there, because they're not, I don't think DESI votes on budgets. I mean, I think they get handed a budget, don't they, from the legislature? So it's not like...
They make a lot of calls, though. I mean, a lot of the COVID stuff we found out about from them before we knew about it, you know?
Right, right. But I don't, again, I'm trying to figure out what a conflict, what a conflict of interest might be versus the value of having people who are actually doing the work, sitting down with the board that makes policy. That, to me, is very valuable.
I'm comfortable if you, if you want to make a motion.
I'll make the motion that we have our delegates support this resolution number four.
I think this is...
Oh, no, it's three.
Three, okay. Can we get a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna say no, just because I'm really unsure about what will happen, so nothing personal in the vote.
Should we just do a roll call vote then?
Sure.
Thank you, Mark.
No, you can do a regular one.
I think I'll vote for it. I don't, you guys explained it to me. I don't have any concerns.
Okay, all, so was there any other additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No.
A post?
No.
Just Mr. Callahan? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on. Resolution Four is preserving local governance of Massachusetts schools. This one definitely made sense to me. It talks about the communities, including Lawrence, that have been in receivership for some time, and it doesn't seem to be benefiting them. All of the metrics that they've looked at, that they're not, they're not making the improvements that they should be making. And so the idea here is that they would put a cap on receivership at three years, and then it would go back to local governance, which I think makes sense, given that they've been trying it without success. A deadline would maybe incentivize the process. Any other thoughts on this one? Yes, Mr. Callahan?
Again, you know, we got this on Thursday, and none of us know anything about the background of these schools and what put them in this, you know, situation in the first place. I agree that three years seems like it should be enough time, and is it because DESI hasn't done their job properly, or they're really in such bad shape? I don't know. I also say everybody, you know, every Mass member votes on this. Is the state required in any way to follow that resolution?
I don't think these are binding. They're just, they're just resolutions, yeah.
But I will say, and I don't know if Mr. Cole has an opinion on this, I've been voting on these resolutions for 20 years. This is the first time that I, I'm checking them straight down. These are well-read, well-written, thoughtful, and are addressing real needs. Maybe nothing happens with them. I know that in Mr. Cole's view, that these things take time, but to put it out there and say this is, I mean, I think the resolution, I've never had it, you know, I usually amend the heck out of the...
I guess my question, Bruce, is like, and again, I don't doubt any of the things that Arlington School Committee has written here, but if Lawrence gets its own school committee back, are all these things they're saying are wrong going to change because there's seven randomly elected people?
Maybe not, but imagine, imagine living in Newburyport and having the state run your schools for 11 years.
Sure, I'm sure it's terrible. I'm saying I agree how that is, and the three is fine, but we don't know the circumstances to what is happening. And is Lawrence any better now that they've been in receivership? I don't know. No one knows.
Right.
Hang on, Mr. Cole.
Steve, go ahead, go ahead.
I mean, one of the things that, you know, that Jeffrey Riley, your Commissioner of Education, used to be the receiver-in-law.
Oh, I know, yeah, I know the whole background of that part, but not the, not the 2011 history where it happened, you know?
Yeah, so, and he actually, he used to, when I was on the board at, for Greater Lawrence Ed Collaborative, he was on the board as well. So I think, you know, the closeness, I mean, and it's been failures. I mean, Chelsea, when, there was a number of years ago when the Chelsea schools were taken over by Boston University, and it didn't work out. So I think it's, it's one of the, and, you know, just this past year, Boston was under pressure to be taken over by a receiver. So I think whatever type of resolution can be developed to put more thoughtful process into it is probably the best thing. So I don't know if that helps.
Sure, thank you.
I mean, these were failing school systems at the time they went into receivership. You know, the kids weren't getting the education that they deserved. Money wasn't being spent the way it should be spent. There's a lot of reasons why a school system goes into receivership, but after 11 years, the state should have figured out what the problems are, and if the resolution states they haven't, that things have not significantly improved, to give it back to the community to deal with it, is what I say.
Want to make the resolution?
Sure. Yeah. I move that we instruct our delegate to vote yes on restoring local governance, Resolution Number Four.
Second. Discussion?
I'll support the resolution. I do have some concerns that I don't know the full story, but at the same time, because this is a recommendation, calling on the legislature to enact legislation limiting the future state takeovers for a term, a specified term, I feel comfortable that that would get worked...
Discussion?
I'll support the resolution. I do have some concerns that I don't know the full story, but at the same time, because this is a recommendation, calling on the legislature to enact legislation limiting the future state takeovers and for a term, a specified term, I feel comfortable that that would get worked out at the legislature if they decided to take this up, and that there would be a lot of expert input on what the appropriate term would be, and that we'd get a lot more feedback from folks like, who are directly impacted by this. So, I, in general, I, I think I support the idea of it, and I, I don't have any other suggestions related to the terms, but I think that that would get worked out if it ever moved forward.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, resolution five, personal financial literacy education. I definitely support this one. Having this as something that's over a requirement for students makes a lot of sense. I will say that there's a math teacher at the high school who's already, probably more than one, but one I know who's really encouraging this, and my son has told me that he wants to take financial math before he graduates. So, we might need to add a few more sections at the high school. This, that, to me, this one is a no-brainer. Any other?
We've got our program here. What is it called?
Financial math.
Financial math. I'm just saying, we probably need to expand it and offer more sections, because there's going to be increased, there's already, I believe, increased interest in this class.
Yep.
Other thoughts?
I, I agree. I mean, it's something we've been doing for a while.
Have either of you taken the class?
I have, yeah.
Tell us a little bit about it.
I took it last year, which was really helpful, because it kind of talked about, like, planning for, like, financial, like, information in terms of college, so.
That's huge.
Kind of walking into this year, like, kind of feeling like I know some of the terms more, kind of helped me out a lot. And then also, like, taxes, that's another thing that was very helpful to learn more about before leaving high school, because I really honestly didn't know anything about it before I took the class. So, I think there was a lot of good information that I learned that my parents probably didn't want to, and I didn't want to sit down with them to talk about it before high school was over.
I think our district has been doing this for a while. Other districts have been doing it for a while. It would be really nice to have the state say, this is a priority, and, you know, develop the curriculum and get the funding you need to bring in more teachers, so.
We already have that in our portrait of a graduate, don't we?
Yeah, that was part of the, the feedback, financial literacy. And then I would follow up with the second course, your parents are probably right.
That's the advanced one.
Is that honors or AP?
All right, well, I'll make a motion in support of resolution five on financial literacy.
Second.
Any, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, last one. Resolution six is for the establishment of a regional school assessment reserve fund. I'm not sure that there's a way in which this is applicable to us. Mr. Cole and I were talking earlier. We're not sure if Whittier would be considered a regional school in this context of this resolution. Anyone has thoughts on that?
Yeah, no, I would think it would be.
Yes?
Were you thinking that it wasn't like a Trident or Pintucket? Is it somehow separate?
Well, because it's a technical school. I wasn't sure if it fell into a different category.
Yeah, no, I think, I think the regional high schools, districts are pretty clearly identified. It, it seems to me, my understanding of this, that the establishment of a, of a reserve fund on the state is for towns and cities that are struggling to meet the assessment. That impacts on the whole district. So, I, I think that, that, you know, while it doesn't directly impact us, we have support education, and some of these communities are, you know, there are some regional districts that are made up of communities that vary really widely.
And they have to figure out how to, I mean, that need, this actually reminds me of the discussion we had superintendent with the superintendent of Whittier Tech, just right before this meeting. We had a joint education meeting where the superintendent of Whittier joined us on Zoom, and the question came up from one of the city councilors, how, how do you determine our, our share, our city's share of Whittier's budget? And she said it's a complicated formula, but it, it does take our ability to pay into account. It's not just directly the number of students that attend, but also different communities have different abilities to pay. So, I, I'm guessing that this resolution would speak to that as far as maybe trying to level the playing field a little bit for communities that are struggling to pay into a, a regional system?
I mean, that was the way I read it.
Okay. Any other thoughts or questions on that?
I'm wishing that we instruct our delegate to vote in favor of resolution number six, regional school assessment reserve fund.
Take it.
Sir, yeah, sir.
You can have it, Steve.
No, you got it.
Take your pick. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First time this.
Thank you, Bruce, for no amendments. It makes my job a lot easier.
Yes.
We just finished going through them.
Yeah, we had some great amendments. We had some great discussions.
I'm sure.
It's the first time we've, we've given a thumbs up to all of them.
No worries. Okay, so we're on to our subcommittee updates. Mr. Callahan, we did have our finance meeting.
We did, thank you. We met on 13th in Mr. Willhelle's office. Standard transfers, we talked about non-union increases, which apparently had been done a lot in the past. We would get a yearly record of central office administration and their staff salary, basically. That was a pretty simple report. And then we got an athletic fees presentation from Kyle Hodson, the A.D. I've been, this is my fifth year, and every year I've been on budget and have been asking former superintendents about, hey, can we have, no, actually, what sports cost, basically, instead of one line item. So, you know, Phil is great, and Kyle came back to us with a spreadsheet PDF with basically every possible dollar. So, Phil is going to, I guess, receive that from Kyle and in actual spreadsheet form, and then generate the whole report. So, when we go into the budget cycle, we're going to know every dime, basically, what gets, what it costs, what the profit margin is, if any, on any given sport, fundraising, all those types of things that we've been trying to find out forever. So, I think this will be the first time in the athletic line item. Won't be just a number, right?
Right.
Yeah, that was pretty much it.
Can I add one thing?
Yeah.
One of the things that came out of our discussion is that the athletic fees, the athletic fees that are collected for middle school sports, it's not a huge figure. It was a little over 20,000, and that's the complete cost of the programming. It's not just subsidizing the programming. And so, we'd love to take a look at covering those fees in the operational budget to encourage more students to get involved in these starter athletic programs at the middle school. So, that, that'll be coming up with budget planning. But that was kind of exciting to see that that's something we could, we could take on potentially. Did you, do you have a question, Ms. Walker?
Yeah, I guess, I, I so welcome that breakdown, because I have the same concerns, and we'll want to definitely talk about that in the budget process. I would broaden that to theater and other special activity fees, if possible. I think pretty much every special activity at the school has some kind of participation fee. So, to my understanding, and if there aren't some, if there are some programs that don't have those fees, great. But my understanding is pretty much every special activity. I mean, even, I think there's even a fee for ceramics or something. I mean, I, you know, just to me, any fees that are being put on our students that are outside of, for, for requirement for participation in any activity, I think I would like to understand what they're being used for and why, why we feel the need to do that rather than covering them in our budget.
Policy. Have you had a meeting since our last meeting?
We have not, and our next one is scheduled for next Monday, the 24th. I don't think there'll be a lot on our agenda, because our MASC policy review contract has to be sort of, we have to collect the documents, and there's going to be a little bit of a delay in getting that information. We're hoping that we'll potentially have our representative at the November meeting to start that review. But I think we'll probably meet anyway, just to get, just to, to review what's outstanding and sort of think about what, what our future agendas are going to look like, but.
When's that one?
That is Monday night, yeah.
What time?
Uh, seven. And we have those at the NOK Library.
A week from tonight?
The 24th, yes.
Can we put that?
Mayors, is it safe to say our new, our new member will be attending that meeting, or is that?
Yeah, I mean, as long as they come in and get sworn in.
To be the third? I, I think that all happens Thursday night, right?
The swearing-in doesn't.
Okay.
As long as they come the next day and get sworn in, or Monday morning, they could, they could attend.
Then they could attend that meeting?
Sure.
Okay, that's exciting.
Can we put the trip policy?
Well, that's, that's true.
Sure, yeah, to consider the, uh, member, Callahan, just asked if we could also do a, a review of the trip policy and some, you know, whether it's, needs any review. I think we can certainly do that.
Yeah, thanks. I will be there.
We might not, we might not act on it.
No, that's fine. Just easier to do that than calling you over and over again.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine. We can put that on.
Plus, there's witnesses.
Oh, we got rusty. We had no trips for so long. What do, how do we do this?
Say seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock at the NOK Middle School Library.
Thank you.
All set for policy?
Joining Ed met today.
We just met.
Just met prior to this meeting, and we'll be meeting again just prior to the November meeting. We had the superintendent and business manager from Whittier Voc Tech on the line, and they presented some of the things they're doing. And I, I think one of the really interesting things, certainly Council Lane was very enthusiastic about, is they're now offering marine technology as a vocation. So, that's, that's brand new. Nobody else outside of the Cape, Cape Cod, is offering that as Voc Tech option. So, that was, that was interesting news. As, as Vice Chair Hall said, we learned a little bit about the formula for making assessments, but it is very complicated. And I think that's it. You know, I'm, I, nothing definitively has happened, but I, but I, I think that the city council is moving in the direction of dissolving, joining and moving into something else. You know, I, I've expressed my opinion about that. I, I could see meeting four times a year or something like that. But there's value in, in having those relationships and that communication, but it's a city council committee. So, that's all I got. Superintendent Valuation, I don't have an update. Have you been doing your work?
No, I've been taking the follow-up. No. Yeah, we're, we're working on utilizing vector system. And Assistant Superintendent Ippolito was hitting that up, but as, as we all know, she's taking a little break right now, and so, we'll be following up with Mr. Menon on how that process is going to look.
Ms. Walker, transportation?
Yeah, we have a meeting tomorrow afternoon. The hope is that we will have something for the full school committee, for our first meeting in November.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, superintendent's report.
All right, just a, a few items to report on. Just a, an MCAS update. We're sending out the individual reports to families, so they'll be receiving those scores. Overall, the data looks similar across the state. Newburyport, very similar. And as, just a reminder, remember the, you know, going back to normal, the last full MCAS test was in 2019. In the spring of 2020, there was no test. Spring of '21, it was an abbreviated test. And then in spring of '22, we went back to the full test. So, looking at, we had a, Central Office had a conference call with the super, the commissioner, who actually informed all superintendents. One of the data points that they're looking at is time on learning. So, we all know of the absences with students, but also taking a look at staff absences during COVID. If you all remember, there was mandated timeout for people that had COVID. So, they're looking at that data. We're also looking at that data as we're looking at the 2022. I think for all of us, as we'll be presenting an overview, but really looking at the 2022 data as like your new baseline data, because we've been out of MCAS testing and standardized testing for the past three years. In addition, Dr. Abrams has been working with and our extended leadership team in Assistant Superintendent Lisa Marie's absence. And as you all know, she's a big advocate of data and data dives and data teams. So, the work that she's been, her and Dr. Abrams have done has been instrumental with really taking a look at data, our internal assessments along with the MCAS. We plan on presenting to the school committee kind of the, the big overview of the MCAS. And as I said, Dr. Abrams moving forward with that process right now. So, we're excited about that.
If I could just add, we, we, we got sort of the first draft of the presentation at the SISIL meeting, and, you know, there are some really good, very positive things that are happening. And, and we've had some, some setbacks, certainly consistent with what we've seen across the state. But I was very impressed with, we've made movement in some areas that we hadn't made movement in, in years.
All right, and I, I think for all of us, we, obviously, the MCAS is a, a piece of the puzzle, but really, I think as a school committee, since my tenure, it's really those internal assessments and making sure what, how we're assessing students on a daily basis, utilizing our own internal assessments is really the key to success. So, the standardized testing, it will be, you know, as the state's saying, utilizing that 2022 as kind of like your baseline as we move forward into this, this school year, so. Yes.
It'll be interesting to see eye-opening at the end of the year.
Correct.
What kind of data that can give us.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. I think we're, and as Assistant Superintendent Ippolito has brought to the district, really analyzing our internal assessments and developing the data teams to, that. So, we have that in place. The vertical data team is new to the district, and that's something Dr. Abrams is heading up at this point, but Assistant Superintendent Ippolito brought that. And then also working with our, each school has their own data team, grade level meetings and content areas. So, you know, we're, we're excited about that, and really making that a formal process. The, oh, yes.
Can I just ask, so, I appreciate that we got a presentation on the amount, what am I trying to say? The scores, but, but I do, I do appreciate also that we have a number of assessments that we're tracking, how kids are doing. So, I prefer, if we can, do it in a context of all the assessments, or if it's a periodic, every few months update, if the assessments aren't happening all at the same time. I know that's typically done by the SISIL, or there's part of the topics for SISIL, but if it could come to the school committee at, in a summary fashion, I think that's really important. So, I just, I, I think MCAS is really important, but it's just one tool. And I just want to make sure that we're also, we're spending money on other assessments. I want to make sure that we're, we're receiving that information. I know the staff is, but it would be great for the school committee to see it in a summarized way. So, I don't, when was the last SISIL meeting? It was before.
October.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it was early October. Yeah, that, some of that information was part of Dr. Abrams' assessment, his analysis. Was looking at some of those assessments and what some of the new assessments are bringing to us. So, I think, you know, if there's a way to bring them in or time, timeout, getting that information, I, I. that information, I, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah. Thank you.
Great.
All right. Next, yep, any other? All right.
Were you, did you want to talk about some of the other things listed here? The one-to-one device?
Yes, so I have, I'll, I'll speak about our, actually, I can jump to the one-to-one. Um, so our techno, one-to-one technology update, Andy Wolf and Ms. Furlong have begun a series of conversations with the stakeholders about the NHS one-to-one device program. So as you all recall, we, we've been working on this, um, right before COVID is when we first started, uh, but we've continued to, um, look at the one-to-one program. So we've developed an ad hoc group of students, parents and guardians, along with teachers in the district and especially our tech administrators, um, to review the work that we've done up until this point, uh, to share the vision for the program and to discuss Apple devices options. Uh, we've began the device selection process by utilizing a rubric. So the group will meet again, uh, this week and feedback from this group will be used to select the final device and guide the process for really launching our one-to-one program. Um, so if you all recall, um, Mr. Sheridan, uh, came in and, uh, you know, really kind of showed some of the work that the MAP department did, especially over, uh, COVID and how, uh, our teachers utilizing some of these devices is really fundamentally changing how they deliver an education. So these are the discussions that are happening at this point, uh, with the ad hoc committee.
We really saw that when we took the tour of, um, ground floor of the high school, how the teachers were using, um, computers, technology.
Right, and, and I think for us, it's really just looking at, uh, enhancing the instruction and what tool, uh, that the teachers can also, uh, utilize with the students to, to really bring that instruction to life. And that's kind of, the focus has been over the past couple of years and as, as you all recall, you know, periodic updates, it's been a lot of professional development that's gone in with the staff, um, you know, before they, uh, it's really not about the device, it's really about the instruction that's happening and what tool brings us, uh, closer to, to what we want as a school community. Jumping into the next spot is the feasibility study and we had a nice little, um, tour with school committee. We looked at, um, the integrated art space down below along with the College and Career Center and then also had an opportunity to work with school committee on the, um, MSBA uh, science project in the Science Wings to really get a flavor of the high school and kind of some of the ideas that we have. So part of working with Harriman Architectural Firm is we have a four-part process that we've developed. So we're going to have a listening session, which is October 19th, uh, with, at NHS. Um, so we'll be working with, uh, the teachers and the, um, administrators and kind of really looking at what is happening now and how we can enhance that space. We'll be doing school tours, we're going to be, uh, going with the Integrated Arts Program at Pentucket and then also, uh, NUvu School in Cambridge, um, who have really, uh, enhanced their integrated art space to kind of get ideas of kind of what this can look like. Then we have a three-hour visioning session, um, with the architects and our teachers, um, who are part of the whole process and that's going to be Wednesday, uh, 11:16, from 1:15 to 4:15. And then also multiple program meetings. So that will use a structure that includes whole group, um, start with the breakout sessions to follow. So I think part of the whole process is to really, um, work with our faculty, uh, who are actually in these programs, kind of visioning with them what we have now and how, how they feel we can enhance the program. Then the architects are going to take all of our input, they'll design their feasibility uh, study and then they'll present that. So we also have, um, Andy Wolf has, uh, confirmed all the participants in the spaces that teachers will be as part of this process. So myself, Steve Brockholm, Lisa Furlong, a couple other administrators will be working with this group, uh, for the, throughout the next couple of months. So we're excited about that. And I think that's all I have at this, at this point, those three items.
Great. Do you have any new business? All right, um, so we're going to take a brief recess. Do I need to do a motion for that? About 10 minutes? No? Okay, so we're going to take a 10-minute recess and then just so everyone's aware, at, um, 7:55, uh, we will return to vote to enter executive session, um, following which we will not be returning to open session. So that's, that's it? 10-minute, 10-minute adjournment until, or 10-minute break, excuse me? And, uh, we'll be back here at, at 5:00 of-